Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. T L Chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, extending remote participation through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven. Meetings at Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote. Agenda items listed are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. None of all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by C T S B, the school committee recorder, Berkshire Edge, and will be broadcast in the future. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. I have a short statement to read. The vote for a new monument on Tuesday, November fourth was a generational vote of faith in ourselves. I just want to thank the voters of Stockbridge, West Stockbridge and Great Barrington for your overwhelming support for the new high school project. We appreciate the faith you have shown in our work. I want to thank everyone who has worked on this project, including the school building committee, the YES Committee, the school committee, the Massachusetts Teachers Association and district staff and administration. In addition, I want to thank our terrific staff from William Ron Associates, Genesco Design and Scansia USA Building, Inc. I also want to thank all those individuals too numerous to mention who stepped forward and gave their time and energy to this project. This vote was just a beginning, not an ending. We have a long road ahead, but when the project is completed, we will have a model high school from which students and the whole community will benefit. So, thank you to everyone. We can start with roll call. Okay, Sarah Canetti.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Andy is still somewhere in this world. Bill.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Diane.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Rich.
Here.
And I am present. We have minutes from October twenty third, two thousand twenty five. Do I have a motion?
So move second.
Any discussion? Hearing non-roll call Sarah.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, unanimous. Turn it right over to the superintendent's report.
Okay, I think let's start with the student member items. Tyler, what do we got?
All right, well, we'll start off with the school vote. As, as I'm sure you guys know, we vote, we've got the school passed. The result is a huge shorts of excitement for our school community. I mean, today was, everybody was excited. You could tell. Um, this is very, this is, on behalf of Monument Community, we'd like to thank everyone who helped out, any way to make this possible, and the voters. I couldn't vote because I was seventeen, which stinks, but you know, I, I, I got the word out, don't worry. It's been incredibly warming and inspiring to see the way that our community rallied to support all of our, to support our school. So, thank you guys again. So, for sports, uh, boys soccer team won. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was five to one?
Five to zero.
Five to zero, never mind, five to zero, even better. Uh, we have another game this Saturday. It's a big game for us, and we hope a great turnout there, even though it's an away game, it's three hours away. I probably, probably not gonna go, but I would be supporting from, from my, from my seat at my house. So, yesterday we had unified basketball senior night. This was a great night, even though we didn't win. It was a great turnout. Everybody had fun, the players, coaches, staff. We just wanted to thank everybody for showing up. And, uh, yeah, it was a great night. Football team had senior night last Friday. They lost as well, but it was a great, great turnout. I went there, it was pretty cold, but you know, we, we, we went through it and it was, we almost won. So, yeah. Uh, other news, first quarter of Monument High School is over. Uh, it was really good. That's about it for the first quarter. We got homecoming this weekend, this Saturday. It's, uh, and the student body is quite excited. Homecoming is typically an event that brings a lot of student body together, so it should be a fu- uh, fun time. This year's homecoming theme is Mardi Gras, which is pretty cool. I, I like that. Uh, Fall Fest Tech Week, our students involved in Fall Fest have entered their intensive tech week period during which they get to, ready to perform their show. Some challenges that we've had were daylight savings. Though a shift in one hour's worth of daylight may not sound like a lot, seeing the sun, uh, seeing less of the sun is hard. I woke up the other week and I thought I, my clock was wrong because it was nighttime and I was like, what's going on? But, yeah, the only other challenge I have is the boys' bathroom is still closed, which is a little, is really pretty hard for me, especially when I'm right next to where the bathroom would be, but I have to walk all around the school, walk all around back and miss some class time. But, yeah, after that, no challenges really.
Right. Uh, Christopher, you got anything to add?
Yeah, just a little bit. I mean, I might not be as exciting as. That's why you're here. So, um, a number of folks have, uh, at least Steve's mentioned it. Um, everybody's saying it in general, but I'd be remiss if I did not. Uh, we're thrilled with the outcome of the vote on Tuesday for the new building project. And we just want to thank the community for their support of our students and we look forward to a great future for Monument High School. Uh, the only other thing I would add for good news is, I just wanted to alert that the P D day that we have on Tuesday and the one that we're gonna have on the twenty fifth, uh, really provide considerable time to update particular, uh, materials based on how the year's progressed so far. As we're also, um, targeting our goals through ongoing P D. The Berkshire County, uh, P D day, which was on Tuesday, for that day, both last year and this year, many of our teachers choose to stay at the high school, working departments, working with their colleagues, um, on those particular things. And then, on the twenty fifth, we're also gonna take some advantage of the time there to, uh, dig into our N C A S data, uh, with four core, uh, departments, analyze that, uh, for a plan on how we can improve our teaching and also improve, uh, our performance on the, uh, on the N C A S. Challenges, uh, is just, you know, it's like, I guess what happens also with the good news and challenges is that because Tyler brings it, it sort of reduces my area of, uh. Continues to creep up. We're working hard on this and we will continue to do so all year, but it doesn't make an issue. We notify parents, we meet with students to see what we can do to assist. We also, uh, discuss certain cases that our student support team, which is, um, comprised of clinicians, counselors, um, the nurse, um, variety of people who, uh, have different roles in the building and have different outreach connections with families. Uh, so we see what we can do there and, um, and we generally try to give one or two staff with the closest relationship to the student family working on it. Uh, see if we can change the schedule, see whatever we can do. So, just know that, um, these things are on our mind, we're working on them daily and, uh, and, uh, challenges we're gonna do after.
Great. Thanks, Adam. Uh, Jake.
All right, getting the set next to Kristen Benke.
It's a flashback.
Triggering deja vu and some trauma. If I need a moment. Congratulations to all of you on, on the building. We'll talk a little bit about that here at the end. Um, we have coffee with counselors tomorrow in our cafeteria from eight thirty to nine thirty. All of our middle school parents and anybody from the community that would like to come. Um, coffee with counselors is just the time to sit down with families and hear what's on their mind. And, uh, it, it, in my experience, about ninety percent of the time, it winds up being social media and cell phones is what's on, on, um, middle school parents' minds, uh, as it should be, and I'm sure tomorrow will be no different. Uh, our P T O is meeting on November twelfth from eight thirty to nine thirty in our community room to talk about fundraisers and community activities and how we can be involved. Um, really excited, the twenty twenty six Dewboys musical is kicking off, uh, with a family meeting next week. The musical this year, last year was Matilda, which was amazing. This year it's going to be Something Rotten. Um, I am not familiar with that. So, but I've had a bunch of middle school kids who are telling me what it's all about and they're very excited about it. And, uh, we can't wait till the spring to see, uh, how this all turns out and to see our kids in action. Uh, we're very grateful to Burke twelve for once again organizing the countywide P D day. We had, uh, about half of our staff stayed back in the building, um, and did either work within departments within the school or, uh, our science department worked with the high school science teachers to make sure that we have a smooth trajectory through the sciences, uh, five through twelve. But we also had some folks go out and do some really interesting things on a countywide basis. And it was especially nice for our world language teachers, people like our school nurse, some of our clinicians that just don't really have colleagues that do exactly what they do in the building. So, we're grateful for the Burke twelve's leadership on that. And, um, a lot of our folks came back with some really interesting and good information to share. Uh, congratulations to the unified basketball team. Didn't get a win last night, but every single game is a win, uh, in reality. Just amazing, the crowd that was there yesterday for senior night. Um, it was wonderful. The players, the coaches, parents, families, fans, uh, is just really something to behold. And, um, I think last night was the last regular season game, but there is the end of year jamboree that I think this year is taking place at Mount Greylock, and that is on November eighteenth, and the first game starts at three forty-five. So, and that's an amazing time to, to see teams from not only Berkshire County, but, uh, at least thinking back over the last four or five years, a couple of other schools from other parts of Western Mass. So, it's a real celebration if you get the opportunity to go up to Mount Greylock on November eighteenth. Um, as far as the building project, I gotta tell you, it was remarkable to me the day after the vote. Kids were absolutely buzzing and humming about the vote at Dewboys. Lots of mental math going on to see how many years. In the new building, a ton of questions about what's gonna, you know, how's it gonna work? What are the logistics? Are they? How, just, where's, where's the new building going? How, how are they gonna get rid of the old building? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna be, have to stay home for three months?
You know, we should have the design team come down and present to the school at some point.
Well, I, I was actually gonna, I was actually gonna make that point that I, I think to, to have the design team come down and talk to, um, the future Monument students and walk them through that would be an awesome experience on a lot of different levels, but, um, uh, our kids are just so excited and I know their families are just as excited. And so, thank you to all of you and to all the voters that just overwhelmingly, um, decided to do something for the next three or four generations of kids in our communities. It's just remarkable. Um, challenges, sort of the usual at a middle school. Uh, we continue to work with a lot of individuals and groups of students on just the basics of being a decent, kind and gracious person as much of the time as you can be. We're really working right now on, on how friends and neighbors should talk and treat one another, whether you're friends or not. Uh, dealing with, with, um, how to be a person who shows good character and good thinking in an online environment. We're really struggling with a couple of pretty significant, um, social media-based issues right now. And we're very grateful for, for our partnership and our work with the Great Barrington Police Department on those. That's the level of seriousness that we're talking about, uh, in terms of, of the language that's being used. And, um, really making sure that the Chromebooks, that the school, the school committee, the budget, the community is give kids, are helping particularly our fifth graders understand these are educational tools, um, not to send each other emails for five of the six hours a day. And, uh, and that it's a very powerful tool for good and for bad. And, uh, just, that's the work we're doing that's, that's challenging and, uh, but we're grateful for the partnership of our teachers and our kids and our families and taking that work on. But, that's it for us.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Cynthia.
It's always tough, Alan, Jake. So, I apologize if I wasn't here last, uh, at your last school committee meeting. Two weeks ago, we were having open house at the time. Um, I apologize for that scheduling snafu and it certainly will not happen again, but open house was really lovely. Uh, we had a significant amount of families there. The turnout was great. Um, the model of the new school is right in our front foyer, and so, everybody got to see it. Kids were playing with it. It was, it, it's just really awesome. Um, so, we also had fire safety week two weeks ago where the Stockbridge Fire Department came with a fire truck and, um, and their uniforms and their equipment. And every grade level got to have a demonstration, both, um, there were some, there was some learning about fire safety that they got to go out and climb on a fire truck and touch the fire truck, all that stuff, which was really cool. Um, our fourth grade has a, um, traditional mask making for the Day of the Dead unit. And that was on the week of Halloween, and they invite families in to see the work that the kiddos did um, for, as part of a North American unit. We, as I said, had parent-teacher conferences, which was, not conferences, we had open house, which was really wonderful. Um, families are really, really happy to be in the building and seeing one another and with their parents, and it's just, it's a really wonderful evening. We had our monthly assembly. And one of our conditions that our monthly assembly is that we have high five tickets, which are these, um, sort of, these, uh, tickets for our P D I S, which is our, um, Positive Behavioral Support System. And if you get caught doing something good, you get a high five ticket. And then, every, um, once a month, uh, Betsy DiAgostino goes around and kids can use their tickets to buy things at our high five store. Um, and so that, the first one of the year that happened, kids are so stoked. And not only can they buy things, but they can also buy lunch with Miss DiAgostino. They can get a dance party with the clinicians. So, it's some really, really fun stuff. And then in the assembly, we take all those high five tickets that they cashed in the week prior, and then in the assembly, we pick one ticket. And that student that we pick gets to pick from a menu of things, and the teacher whose name is on that ticket also gets to pick from a menu of things. Um, so at our monthly assembly, a kindergartner's ticket was drawn. And of the, of the things that he chose, he will be principal for the day next week. And, you know, he's surprised to hear that the kindergarten teacher who also won has asked that I go in and teach in her classroom for an hour while she gets to take a break. It's so funny. So, that's just super fun. Um, and that was in our monthly assembly. We also, um, we also have a winning for the cafeteria coyote, which is the paraprofessionals that are in the cafeteria vote about which grade level was the quietest in the cafeteria that month. Um, because as you can imagine, the cafeteria can get pretty raucous. So, that was really exciting to, you know, finally give out the cafeteria coyote. At that same assembly, we also had a flash mom where everybody stood up, the lights went out, and Michael Jackson's Thriller came on. And the whole school did the Thriller dance, which was, is also super fun. And then we, and then the whole school paraded outside in their Halloween costumes and parents lined the walkway from the front door around the sidewalk down to the back door. We played some spooky music and everybody walked around and it's, it's a tradition at school and it was really fun. Tomorrow, we have our Veterans Day breakfast and our, um, assembly will re-honor our veterans, and we're very excited about that as well. Um, and I also do want to say congratulations about the high school. I am, um, it, it's really amazing. I'm super happy for the kiddos at my school, because every kiddo at my school is gonna be up there. And hopefully, they're in the auto body shop and hopefully, they're doing some really amazing things and that. So, I'm really excited about it and thank you all for your hard work for that, because that's amazing for my kids.
Thanks, I agree.
Yeah.
So, I'm just gonna echo some of the other things. I, I won't go through my whole remarks, I've done them a couple times. Uh, it, it's such a remarkable moment, right? And, and I feel so hopeful about our school, our community and where we're going and, and very appreciative of everybody who worked on this stuff. It's great. Other stuff, uh, no grant approvals or donations this week. Uh, to my right is Kristen Benke. She's our new business administrator. The finance subcommittee met her previously, and I've been to so many meetings lately, I couldn't remember if I've introduced her already. And, but I have been to, to the, the whole group. Uh, she's a rock star. We're so lucky to have her join our team. Um, we, we made her job more complicated on Tuesday than, than it, than it could have been, but much less complicated than if it gone the other, other way. So, uh, welcome. It's great, it's great to have you here.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome, welcome.
I'm excited to be here.
Thanks for coming. Um, I thought folks from the American Legion and Veterans Scholarship Program may be coming to present. I don't see them in the audience. Uh, we, we'll invite them back again, but, but they're doing some neat stuff and, and, uh, we'd love to hear from them about that. In your packet is a recommendation for an additional high school boys' basketball coach to be funded by the Booster Club. Uh, the rationale is in the letter, um, in the packet, it's, it's our practice. Uh, and Christopher can respond to questions if we both have any. And, and I do know that we said we were gonna form a, uh, subcommittee to talk about the, uh, our, our process for this, and as everyone understands, a lot of things are slowed down until November fourth, and now we will set some dates and, and do that.
And Steve said it to cut me off, so you didn't give a big speech.
I knew something.
Yeah, how about this? I would say, I would gladly pay for the, have the district pay for their coaches if they need it, but I know we're gonna address that as a global issue with the new committee. So, I will, I will keep my product.
Anyone have any questions? Do I have a motion? Why don't you do it quickly? Go out a second. Second. Any discussion? Should have brought up other things.
So, uh, just.
I, I smoked his own.
We're gonna consider the whole Booster Club situation, right?
Yes.
At some point.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. I, I, I would like, um, now, now you can get all track. Uh, Steven. Yeah, I think we should have a conver- I think we, our first meeting of that committee, we should really talk about what we're gonna do and, because I think it's more than just looking at the narrow corporate guidelines that they have now. I like to address all of these issues at one time and make whatever changes we need to make. Including what you just said, so.
Have we determined who's gonna be on that committee?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
I think they have volunteers and I think Doreen has a list. Yeah. Yeah, I'm incorrect. If I'm incorrect, we'll come back in two years. I don't remember who they are.
Yeah, I don't remember. And if somebody wants to be added, it's not, not committee, it's just adjutant, that's fine.
Yeah. Well, 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 Sarah.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Uh, Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And it's unanimous. Okay, so thank you, that's great.
Um, do we need to do any more update on the vote in the M S B A?
I'll, I'll keep talking about it.
Well, when you've lost a couple, you don't mind talking about this for a long time.
I, well, I was sure, the thing you and I talked about earlier today is, from, from our, Peter, my limited research, we think this is the widest margin of any M S B A vote like ever. And it was certainly more than Wapona and Mabue.
Wow.
Yeah. When I was talking to the Scansia guy, the guy who's the project manager of Western Mass, he's there.
Yeah.
He said this is the largest one he's, he's ever seen.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, yeah, so I think typically votes are in the fifties or sixties, and ours was in seventy-seven point nine five.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, it's, it's remarkable. And I also think, well, a little bias, it's like the town clerks and the town people who work at the elections. This was not a typical election. This was a tough one for them. Uh, good for us and good for them, because it was a good turnout, which is important for everyone, but it was a tough day. And, and the two ballots made it complicated too, because people had to check in twice.
Yeah.
So, yeah, good. Um, just the, the only other thing I'll share is, uh, we, we had our post-meeting, meeting about this and what's coming uh, next, and, and there's a lot of work to do. I like the idea of, of getting the design team over to the middle, and I think the elementary school. I think the parents in the elementary school would really appreciate it. To, to do a talk. Um, what, what's gonna happen now, like, everyone's like, oh, you get to catch your breath, but there's never a time to catch our breath. The time has already passed.
Yeah.
And, and they're gonna do the, or use the next four months to really dig in on design, to spend a lot of time at the high school, connecting with teachers, to fine tune things. Um, and, um, and, and start mapping out, uh, construction-level detailed documents, uh, in, in advance of, um, of putting this all out to bid. And I think you remember, many people remember, we're, we're doing this as a, a design bid build instead of uh, the construction manager at risk. So, having those plans be very precise really, really matters. So, uh, the, the design people, uh, are gonna be really busy, but, but lots of us are gonna be busy talking to them as well. Yeah, and one of the things I skipped when I, when I made my statement was, we will continue to have forums so people can see the progress that's been made. A little different take on the forums, it's more gonna be informational. We'll answer questions, but there'll be less questions, it's just so people understand where, where our progress is. As they go along and see the buildings start to go up, they're gonna have questions, they're gonna be curious, and I think that's important. Yeah, very, 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 very exciting.
Peter, do we have, uh, funding to take us through this next phase of forums?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna circle back to you on that. Uh, it, it's likely that we'll do, uh, several small borrowings that then roll up into a, a, a bigger borrowing for all of it, but, but we're starting conversations. Like, the, the, the level of detail around this is, is remarkable, but they, they need, um, uh, certified original copies of all the votes, and, and we have certified copies, but they're not original. So, so we're getting those, and that goes to bond counsel and the lawyers, then we map out a range of ways of, of doing it, but, but in all likelihood, there'll be some, uh, smaller borrowing, which is a regular practice that we do anyway. And, and, and then, and then some, some bigger borrowing and, and we'll, um, test the, the current and near future rates against our assumptions, uh, and, and, uh, this, it'll be very exciting, but, but we'll come back and share more detail on that. Maybe as early as the next meeting, we might have like a memo that doesn't explain all of it, but explains the process, uh, on all of it, and, and I think people really like to know what's happening, right? They, they do wanna, and, and they have to realize the M S B A is very structured, so we're not flying by the seat of our pants. No, like, we're jumping into module, whatever, right? And we just keep working at it, and bond counsel is gonna be very structured. They, they have their way of doing things, so we, we follow this along. And it's a lot of work, but it's a huge reward at the end. Right, and, and I think we, and I'll come back to sort of the, the broader building committee and maybe the school committee, but the same way we did some of those little cartoon animations to explain things succinctly and accessibly, we, we may do a couple of those on process going forward, um, because we, we were monitoring our, um, view rates for that stuff, and, and it's very, very high. So, sometimes people can't make a meeting at six o'clock or an in-person thing, but, but they can, uh, click on a little three-minute video and, and digest a ton of content, so we may do a couple of those. I'm sure you've got a lot of questions, as I have already, you know, what, what's the next part of this process? When's the building start? When's it open? I mean, all things that people, people are very excited about this, that's why we got the support we got. Yeah.
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 Along that lines, I'd like to, I, I think two people need to be recognized, and that's Peter and Jason. Peter has been amazing in this process. Uh, Rich and I, the other night, were talking about it, that I believe you and I, Rich, were pessimists in twenty sixteen and seventeen, uh, along the lines of saying, let's not go.
let's not go through this statement of interest anymore. They've said it. Let's, you know, just can the whole thing. And Peter, to his credit, did not buy into that. And he was optimistic. Um after the next steps, you were with us in that committee.
Yeah.
Uh you and Jason, um the leadership that both of you showed, I went to almost all the forums. And for people who didn't go to all the forums, some of the questions were really pointed. But as I said today to Rebecca when I was talking to her, they were handled in such a good way. They were handled professionally. They were not nasty. They were not talked down to. Um they were, the the questions that were, could have been interpreted as being maybe very edgy and critical were were handled with poise and with courtesy and with respect. And um I think both of you set the model. I know lots of people have had a lot of parts here. Uh this was a team effort, but I think the leaders need to be recognized as having really stepped up. And um Peter said something that was quoted in the paper this morning. Uh you had a meeting with five people. Um when I saw that, I said, wow, I said, geez, that's amazing. I mean, only five people. And yet, the importance that was made to those five people, I think, must have set in. Because how many people would go to a meeting with five and just say, well, well, none up here, you know, let's go home and 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 that was not done. And I think they have to be recognized for uh being a really an integral part of this whole vote. So that's my comment on the whole thing.
Totally agree. I can, uh you re-upped and joined the school committee again.
That implies consent, but go ahead.
Right.
Why a landslide?
To uh to get this to happen, so they're not allowed, and I won't mention your age publicly, but there are not a lot of people in your age range who would do that. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Hey, let's move on. Do you have anything on the belonging and safety? This building's gonna be really safe.
Yeah.
And uh and I I think it's like. You haven't figured out, we kept this agenda very light. It's been a long wait for for everyone and a good week, a great week. And on the belonging side, like, and we're gonna welcome everybody and everybody's gonna have a strong sense of belonging. Everyone's gonna be inclusive. Yeah, that's that's really good. So under subcommittee, the policy, we're gonna skip the second reading of the security cameras in schools. We'll bring that up probably at the next meeting. We're just not quite ready to bring it up yet. Um buildings and grounds.
Had a meeting.
Wonder why? Superintendents evaluation.
We just met and talked about uh Peter's goals for the coming year and um which he's refining. And uh we're gonna tie them into a review with the date of the uh district improvement plan. So in progress.
Terrific. I dance up to him.
We did meet, we'll meet again um before the next meeting.
And negotiations, we now will start negotiations with two groups. There are two dates set, one for each group. And uh we'll move that along. Hopefully it'll be a positive negotiations for.
One of the units, Steve, or?
Uh Unit C, which is the paraprofessionals and then the cooperative group, which is our sort of catch-all group for food service, custodians, maintenance, technology. I think that's, I think that's inclusive of everybody. Um if I missed a group, it's not, it's not intentional. Personal report? Uh yeah, just two 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 things I'd like to mention. So Peg Peg Arary, a longstanding paraprofessional, uh like very long term. Paul is is retiring at the end of the school year, so uh there'll be time to celebrate her. That's that's a big one. Uh and then all the other ones are uh winter athletics before the season started. Please note, uh note that we got it done on time. Yeah.
This has been the earliest ever.
It is. Okay, any, any older new business? Check here. Any public comments? Save, done. By unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.